Good evening and welcome to the Fort Smith City Board of Directors meeting on this November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Keep in mind, these meetings are being recorded, shown live for the benefit of our residents who can't be with us in person. At this time, I will do the invocation and I will ask, I'll ask Director Kemp, if you would, do the invocation, and I'll ask Director Rego, if you will lead us in the pledge. Okay? Thank you.
Let's pray together. Lord, we humble ourselves tonight, so grateful and thankful for the opportunity and the blessing you give us to live in this wonderful community, the freedoms you've given to us, and the many, many blessings. I'm reminded of Jeremiah twenty-nine, Lord, where your word tells us to seek the peace and the prosperity of the city you have sent us to, for in its welfare we have our welfare. Lord, that's what we endeavor to do tonight. May we honor you, and may your will be done in Fort Smith as it is in heaven, in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ver- thank you very much. This time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Directors Rego?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
George Kitzavas?
Here.
Christina Kitzavas?
Here.
Settle?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. This time, I'll ask the board if there's any item of business not already on the agenda for this meeting. Okay? Thank you, seeing none. This time, we'll ask for the approval of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regular minutes.
Some of the-
And, and, if you would, Director Settle, and the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting.
Some of the-
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce members of the Marriage Youth Council. Would you all please stand up, those that are still here? Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. Now, you are welcome to stay as long as you'd like, but I know you probably have homework and other things to do, but-
What's better than this?
I know. But they're made up of students from all across the community, and we're so thrilled that they're with us. And, and where's my head person? Madeline, please, stand up. Here's a young lady that brought the idea to my office, and she's responsible for organizing and doing a great job, so thank you very much for the work you're doing. Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a special presentation from the fallen firefighters memorial, and this time, we'll have a new fire chief, Darrell Clark. Would you please come, sir?
Acting Administrator Dingman, Mayor McGill, and Board of Directors, I'm honored to present our plans for the new Fort Smith Fallen Firefighters Memorial that will be located at Fire Station One at North Fifth and B Streets. The members of the Fort Smith Fire Department created the Fort Smith Firefighters Foundation to purchase the last remaining old pumper that was scheduled to be sold by the FSFD. The foundation is recognized by the RS as a five-oh-one C-three. FSFD personnel then started donating to the foundation every pay period. The foundation purchased the nineteen-seventy-seven American La France pumper and modified and restored it to be used as a departmental funeral truck. The foundation maintains this funeral truck for firefighter funerals and supports the operations of the Fort Smith Firefighters Pipe and Drum Corps. The FSFD has now teamed up with the foundation to raise funds for our new project, the Fort Smith Fallen Firefighters Memorial. After over forty-five years, after the line-of-duty death of Monty Howard in nineteen-seventy-three, the FSFD lost Eric Morrison in two thousand and nineteen. We currently have a very modest memorial to our fallen brothers located at Fire Station One. We added driver Eric Morrison to the memorial, but it was just not enough. I looked at several other firefighter memorials over the next several years, and I started thinking of how we could come up with a memorial that is a fitting tribute for the Fort Smith firefighters that made the ultimate sacrifice. After the line-of-duty death of Fire Chief Christensen in two thousand and twenty-three, we were looking at adding him to our existing memorial. I brought up my idea for a new memorial, and everyone agreed it's time. We started working on design concepts and measured the interest of current and past members of our department. Everybody we contacted loved the idea. During our research, we found an artist that sculpts amazing statues, and an added bonus, he is also a firefighter. We talked to the artist and quickly realized that we wanted him to sculpt our statue. We selected Austin Wyshel to sculpt the statue for our memorial. The statue will be a life-sized recreation of one of our own firefighters that we took three hundred and sixty degrees of pictures for the sculptor to use. We were impressed with the level of details and little color accents that he incorporates in his bronze statues. And there's a couple examples on the slide. This picture shows five firefighters that Austin Wyshel sculpted for the Nevada State Firefighter Memorial. The creases in the bunkers, the lugs in the soles of the boots, and the stitching in the helmet leather fronts are small details that add so much to the realism of the statue. After selecting a sculptor, we looked at countless designs. After we knew the general design we wanted to go with, I contacted Studio Six, who designed Gateway Park and Fire Station Eleven in Fort Smith, and the result is... This is a rendering walking up from North B Street. Fire Station One would be in the background. With the new design, we'll have an actual wall that will have a bronze plaque that displays each name individually. The entrance will have a firefighter bell mounted over a bronze plaque that quotes "Our Last Alarm." Studio Six did an amazing job and included several renderings, several angles, from day and night, and most of these pictures are on foam boards outside for everybody to see. The landscaping and light fixtures may change a little when we do the final building design. We have a captain at Station One who manicures the lawn that's immaculate there. He has volunteered to do all the landscape design and installation for us to save some of the cost, but all the renderings that they offered us gives us a really good idea of what the layout would look like. The goal of the final design was to respect our fallen and provide friends and family a place to visit. Our website to purchase engraved bricks is now live. The website is at the top of this, I'm sorry, after the names of the fallen that will go on the wall. We've had eight fallen firefighters in our history. Now for the slide, our website, where citizens and firefighters alike can purchase bricks, and then your engraved brick will forever be part of the memorial. We will have hard copy forms outside. Some people don't like to go online and use PayPal. Some of our retirees especially hated it, so they come by and do a hard copy. We have forms in the back, but the website is there, and the website is on the paperwork if anybody wants to pick it up, but it shows the prices that we have bricks from a hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-five hundred for corporate, and it all goes through our foundation, so it's tax deductible. But I will stand for any questions anybody might have.
Very nice, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay? If not, thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we will go item number one.
The first item tonight is a public hearing and then a consideration of an ordinance certifying delinquent property cleanup liens to the Sebastian County Tax Collector. The city clerk will address this item.
Okay. This time, we will formally open the public hearing. Are there any citizens' comments?
Would you like me to go ahead and do the briefing?
Yes, would you please?
Yes. Okay. The proposed ordinance is the board's annual action to certify delinquent property cleanup liens that were ninety days delinquent as of June thirtieth, June thirtieth of this year to the Sebastian County Tax Collector. The liens are the result of the city's action to abate property cleanup violations or demolitions, and each lien includes a ten percent penalty. This year's ordinance includes three hundred and twenty-six liens totaling a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and one cent, which is the highest amount since the current process began, and I believe that was in nineteen ninety-seven, actually. It covers a hundred and fifty-two properties owned by a hundred and forty-three property owners, including fifty-eight property owners that have been included in past year certifications. In comparison, a hundred and ninety-eight liens totaling a hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents were certified in two thousand and twenty-four. As required by the Fort Smith Municipal Code, the Property Owners Appeal Board conducted appeal hearings on Thursday, September the fourth, and Wednesday, September the tenth of this year. Notice of the appeal hearings were certified, were by certified mail to the property owner of record and publication in the River Valley Democrat Gazette. Only two property owners requested appeal consideration before the Property Owners Appeal Board, Ms. Dora Lopez and Mr. Charles Tidwell. Neither were in attendance, and there were no other individuals present. The draft minutes of the appeal hearings were provided to you in your agenda board packet. As required by law, notice of tonight's public hearing was provided to the property owners either by certified mail or publication in the River Valley Democrat Gazette, which was pub- which was required by law, has been published on four consecutive, for four consecutive weeks. Ms. Dora Lopez and Mr. Charles Tidwell have requested appeal consideration this evening. Due to their request, staff recommends that the board permit Director of Neighborhood Services Shawn Gard to formally present information regarding the abatement actions. The board may either consider the appeal or refer the matters back to the Property Owners Appeal Board. For any other individual that may be present for computer, for appeal consideration, the board may remove the associated lien from the proposed ordinance and refer the appeal to the Property Owners Appeal Board, which they will, their next regularly scheduled on-call meeting is set for eleven o'clock on Monday, December the eighth. If the Property Owners Appeal Board determines the lien or liens should be adjusted or remain due in full, an additional ordinance will be presented to the board at the December sixteenth regular meeting. In the event a partial payment or payment in full is received for any lien included within the ordinance, the motion for approval should include a provision to allow for adjustment or removal of those liens from the ordinance prior to formal submission to the tax collector. The tax collector has historically requested the ordinance not be submitted until January, therefore, any payment made to the city prior to December thirty-one will prevent assessment of that ten percent penalty. Upon approval, the ordinance will be submitted to the tax collector, and the liens plus the ten percent penalty will be added to the two thousand and twenty-five property tax statement, which will be due on October the fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-six, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, we have two, and first is Charles Tidwell. Each individual will have two minutes.
Because Mr. Tidwell is the one who had RSVP'd to the Property Owners Appeal Board and was not in attendance, this is the one that we would request that Director Neighborhood Services Shawn Gard go ahead and present the information, if the board so desires.
Okay. Director Gard, would you make your presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Administration, and Board of Directors. With me this evening, I have Direct Inspector, Property Manager Inspector Doug Mizell. He was the inspector who handled these properties. I will try to keep this as brief as possible in regards to Mr. Tidwell's property located at fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth Street. On, this was a complaint that was received to our department from an individual who flagged down the inspector who had concerns about a dead tree, very large dead tree, in front proximity of Mr. Tidwell's property. On August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, code violation was observed of a dead tree. It was documented and posted with a seven-day notice. All this information should be contained in the packet that the city clerk provided to you. The office staff conducted a legal search. No mortgage was found. On August fifth as well, a certified letter was mailed to the owner along with the first-class letter, first-class letter to, was sent to the tenant as this is a rental property. On August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, the certified letter receipt returned back to us, signed by the co-owner, his wife, Reba Tidwell. August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a follow-up inspection was conducted with no notable progress. A second notice was posted along with a warning ticket, so we left another notification on the property. The property still remained in violation. On the twenty-sixth of August, a final inspection was conducted, and the property remained non-compliant, and it was documented via digital media for assignment to a contractor for abatement action. On, on August twenty-sixth, it was assigned to a regular contractor at first, and it was, it was determined to be such a large tree that we had to get actual, a different contractor to come in. On August twenty-seventh, it was reassigned to All American Tree Service, Rick Hayes, for abatement action, and about a month later, on September twenty-eighth, the property was abated by the contractor and brought into compliance. Since that time, August of this year, I had a meeting in my office with Mr. Tidwell, and the process was gone over with him. Photos were shared, and it was discussed that we had no contact from Mr. Tidwell from this to the time we initiated all this action, notices and letters that went out, things that we had no contact from the owner. He, it was explained, he explained to me, he was working on getting it taken care of, and I explained to him that we have no record of him contacting our office. The way Neighborhood Services operates, when we leave notification, we mail notification out, if an owner or property managed company will contact us, we automatically, at that time, will halt any type of abatement or enforcement action to work with that owner to give them time to try and resolve and bring the property into compliance. There was no such contact from Mr. Tidwell. It was also covered, Mr. Tidwell, that we surely would have worked with him if he would have contacted us. It was further, further covered with Mr. Tidwell, should he get another notice from, in the future, from Neighborhood Services not to ignore or disregard that notice, to contact us immediately, so if there's an issue that he needs more time, or any citizen with Fort Smith that might need more time to contact us, and we will work with them on a timeframe, not to drag it out too long, but give them time to work on it. Sometimes it's a financial hardship, or sometimes it's a weather, inclement weather situation we're dealing with. People just need to communicate with us. The abatement cost for this, the contractor fee was nineteen hundred dollars, as this was a large tree. Code enforcement fees were ninety-four ninety-four, and finance fees were fifty-nine sixty-eight, for a total of two thousand, two thousand fifty-four sixty-two. And I'm going to ask Josh, if you wouldn't mind, for fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth Street, on your screen, you'll see a video of the tree-
Today is August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll be assigning the contractor ECS two-four-two-nine-two-four. Address is fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth. Estimated time is eight hours. This is for dead limbs, front, dead trees in the front. This was based off a complaint.
As you can see by that film, the sheer size of that tree was sitting in right in front of fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth Street, but it was also in close proximity to an adjoining property, and that was the concern of the complainant. If a storm or something would come in, straight-lining winds or something, a large section would break off, it would go right through the roof of a small house like that, so it became a safety concern for our department to get this addressed and resolved. I would entertain any questions that you might have for me at this time, or for Inspector Mizell, who spoke with the complainant, who wished, who wished to remain anonymous.
Thank you. Is there any other citizens' comments on this item?
Yes, we have one more, and that is Kim Fodge.
Okay.
But first, we have Mr. Tidwell.
Okay, Mr. Tidwell, you're recognized.
Thank you. My name is Charles Tidwell, on property at fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth Street. I originally requested to go before the board, the appeal this, because I felt like there wasn't enough time to complete this job, and during the time, just before the appointment to go before the board, there was an accident. My sister's grandson had an horrible accident, and we had to attend his funeral, and I wasn't able to make that meeting. Therefore, I thought I was coming tonight to request to hear the appeal December, but I'll try to explain my position to you. As soon as I found out that the tree was dead, I immediately, probably before I got the notice, began looking for someone to take the tree down. I have two tree people that do my work, Mr. Brennerman and Juan's Tree Service. I immediately contacted Mr. Brennerman, who was my, probably the best tree man in the city, and he came out, and he met me and my son, and we took him around and showed him the various trees that we needed to take it down. We decided that, and he decided that this particular tree needed a bucket truck, therefore, he didn't have a bucket truck, so he declined to do the job, although he has done jobs like that without a bucket truck.
Excuse me, sir, your time is up, but without objection, you may continue. Go ahead. You may continue, go ahead.
Okay. This is going to be pretty extensive, because there's a lot of things involved here.
If you could, make it as brief as you can.
I'll do the best I can. Thank you. Mr. Brennerman tried to help me. He said he knew a guy that probably could do the job. We went over and looked for it. He thought he knew where he lived, we went, but we couldn't find it. Then Mr. Brennerman actually tried to contact another tree man, but he couldn't locate him. But I immediately called the Juan's Tree Service, who I use and have used for thirty years, but one of the problems that Mr. Juan has is he doesn't return calls sometimes, and I called two or three times, he didn't answer. I waited another week and called him again, and this went on for a month or so, and I realized that, and this is not unusual for him to do that, he's slow at returning calls, so I didn't think it'd be a problem at first, but then I realized he wasn't returning my calls, so I had to do something. So I was driving home one day, and I saw a bucket truck go by, and I saw a number on it, and I called that number and asked him to go over and check the tree and see what he'd do it for. And, and this is when I found out that the tree had already been removed. I didn't know who had removed it, but it was gone. And I didn't know, I thought maybe the city had, had removed it because it was real close to the street, but they hadn't contacted me and made any notifications that they were going to take the tree. Now, that presents a problem to me, because I wasn't notified that they were coming on my property without my permission to take a tree that had value, because I heat my home every winter with firewood, and that tree was going to be cut up for firewood, and it had value, but they came and took it. Neither did they notify me that they were coming on my property to take the tree so that I could be there to determine that they didn't do any damage to my property, because the tree ran over the house. And I later got a call from the tenant, said, "Mr. Tidwell, didn't you know that they'd done damage to your property?" "I don't know, I didn't know that." She said, "Well, they did." So I was, there was damage to my property according to her, but I didn't know how or where, so I sent my maintenance man over, and he found some damage on the side of the house, but I wasn't sure whether they did it or what did it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. At this point, was there any other, anyone else to speak on the item? Thank you very much for your comments. I think we've got the gist of it.
Yes, we have Kim Fodge.
Ms. Fodge, you're recognized.
I just wanted to speak on the memorandum that Mr. Dingman provided in the agenda. It's about the two thousand and twenty-five projected goals and updates for the Neighborhood Services Department. I just do, I do think that Neighborhood Services is an important department for our city. They do help with the quality of life and ensure property values are maintained. We have used them at Village Harbor Property Owners Association. I've called them on behalf of that association several times, and they've always been very professional and helped me, but it's my understanding that they are short-staffed when they're not able to get out and do inspections as quickly as they would like to. So I would like to make sure with all the discussions of the budget cuts and everything, that we get an environmental inspector for this department to help minimize the blight and issues, and so that they can obtain their projected goals for the remaining two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Fodge. Thank you. Okay. If there are no further comments on this item, at this time, we will formally close the public hearing, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rule.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve said ordinance with suspension rules minus the property that was just discussed at fifteen fifteen North Thirty-Fourth, and move that back to the Property Appeals Board.
Okay. Second, is that correct, Sharon? Is that, is it a good motion? Thank you.
With the provision.
What?
With the provision.
Preferably with the provision with, to allow us to remove any liens that are paid in full or partial payments to adjustment before it's submitted to the county.
Okay.
Yes, with that provision also.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Did I get a second on that? Okay, you got a second. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance certifying to the Sebastian County Tax Collector delinquent property cleanup liens.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain any more comments from the board.
Just, Mr. Tidwell, your property will go back to the Property Appeals Board so you can have your discussion in December, okay?
Okay. You're fine? Okay. We're going to give you an opportunity to get this corrected, okay? And again, thank you for being here. If there are no further comments from the board, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Passes seven in favor zero post.
Item two.
Item two is an ordinance requiring that all new capital projects or purchases with a value greater than five hundred thousand and not already included in an improved, capital improvement plan be discussed at a board study session before the, before being presented for approval. This item was suggested by Director Christina Kitzavas, and staff will stand for questions on this item.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, we have two, the first being Kim Fodge.
I just want to say that I am in favor of this ordinance. I think it's a great starting point. I think it's a great starting point. However, I would like to see eventually, maybe at some time down the road, that the the number drop down to $250,000 instead of 500,000, especially in light of the deficits that the city is experiencing. I think we need to be very mindful of the expenditures on the capital improvement projects. I also want to thank Mrs. Katsavas for taking the initiative to present something like this to the board. Sad in that it's something that needs to be done, but in light of recent expenses and spending habits, I think this is desperately needed. And I do hope that the remaining, the rest of the board approves this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Next is Crystal Caddeli.
Good evening. So I'm sorry, I forgot my notebook and I can't read without my glasses, so bear with me. I fully support this initiative. I think it's long overdue, like Ms. Fodge commented. I think it's unfortunate that we do have to put an ordinance in place to be responsible. But I do appreciate Ms. Katsavas's work in putting this together and recognizing the need for it. I, you know, I think that it gives the opportunity for new suppliers and contractors to get involved and give us, not only maybe give them extra business, but also give us better cost. You know, furthermore, I would like to suggest one more, you know, evaluation would be that the construction manager for the projects, I would like that to be reviewed. Their roles often overlap architects and engineering firms. And I think that that is something that we could save money on. And one question I do have to ask is, on the construction managers that we hired, are they actually presenting sealed bids or are we just hiring someone we know? How is that working?
Construction management is considered a professional service, which is qualifications-based selection process.
So there's no, like, sealed bids?
Not, not in terms of selecting the construction manager themselves. And when it comes to the projects that they are construction managing, then the individual parts of the, of the project may be submitted by sealed bids.
I would like to see that reviewed or even possibly put into this ordinance that if we are going to use construction managers, that we actually have a bidding process with the requirements.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Director Katsavas, you're recognized.
Thank you. Initially, when I proposed this with the $500,000 threshold, that was kind of an arbitrary number. It's kind of a jumping off point for negotiations. I did not have the numbers for 24 and 25 for what we approved that was unbudgeted. And looking over the list between the two years, there's 14 items. So I would like to amend the 500,000 threshold to 100,000. And I don't know if the rest of the board has seen this, but I'd be happy to pass it around. There were several things that came in under 250,000, so I think it would, you know, with 14 projects split over two years, I don't think it would be unreasonable to lower the threshold to 100,000 because I do think we have time to review these.
I would like to take a look at that.
So there were 14 projects, seven of them were below the $500,000 threshold.
Were these projects not mentioned to the board?
They were unbudgeted. So that's what this ordinance does. It takes.
Meaning the staff made the decisions on those items without board approval, is what we're asking?
No, it was, it was brought to the board, but like, for instance, the water slides, those were never brought to a study session. They were immediately brought for a vote. So what this does is it'll require it to go to a study session with a seven-day waiting or cooling-off period before a vote can take place. So this, with the amendment, this says anything that's unbudgeted over $100,000 would qualify.
It's 500 now.
It's 500 is what I had proposed.
Would someone entertain a motion to, on this, on this item, please?
I make, unless Director K, you make the motion. Cheers. I'll make, I'll make a motion to move, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
To adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, to adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
As amended?
It's not amended yet. It's not.
Okay.
It has to be, it has to be.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
With suspension of the rules.
With suspension of the rules.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Well, we're, we're, we're about 100,000.
Just a moment, just a moment. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
What is, you're not talking about that?
We haven't done, we haven't, we haven't amended anything yet.
We haven't amended anything. We just have.
Now for the discussion from the board, please.
Not, not for discussion.
I mean, with all that being said, this was, this was eight projects in '24 and then six projects in '25. So I think even dropping the threshold down to 100,000, you know, we still have the capacity. This isn't going to overburden our workload. Do any of my fellow directors have a thought on the threshold?
Right. Any discussion? We've got a motion, a second.
Let's, let's, let's read the ordinance, get it in, get us in line, and then we, then we start having that discussion.
Read, read the ordinance so they can get it right.
An ordinance establishing requirements for board study session review of major capital projects prior to consideration for approval and for other purposes.
And I'd like to make a motion to reduce the threshold from 500,000 to 100,000 dollars.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Okay. 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 So we need discussion. We got a second. Okay. Now we'll have a discussion. Yes. Director Good, you're recognized.
So to be clear, the items on this sheet with 14 items all have resolution of ordinance numbers beside them, so they all came before the board. So you are just wanting a study session for every item in, for CIP over $100,000?
This is not presented to us on a CIP plan. So anything that's unbudgeted, that we have not already reviewed in a study session. So like the, the Mazzard property, the Cabanas property, that kind of felt like that came out of nowhere to me. You know, that would require us to, instead of it immediately being put on for a vote, it would give us an opportunity to review it and discuss it and then wait a week before we vote to move forward.
Thank you.
You know, initially, when I proposed this, I didn't know exactly how many projects had come before us that were unbudgeted CIP projects. Now that I see it's only 14 between two years, I'm comfortable with reducing that threshold. You know, because I didn't know, is it 100? Is this going to overburden our workload if it's, but seeing that it's only 14 over two years, I think we can handle it.
Any further discussion? Director Rego.
I just had a clarifying question, and it relates to Section 2, maybe the questions for Colby. The way it's written, project has first been presented and discussed in at least one study session meeting. No vote on a major capital project shall occur within seven calendar days after the major capital project has been, and then zoomed in too far, it goes on. So it would be a two-week period at the soonest before something would be, if this ordinance were to go into effect, before something was permitted to be voted on unless it fits under the emergency exception of the ordinance, correct?
Within seven calendar days, as your study session is on a Tuesday and your next board meeting is seven days later, I think that would qualify and be okay because you're not, you're not holding it within seven days. You're at seven days. So, I mean, if you want to change that language, you could amend it to say, you know, a lot less than seven days. But I think it's fine having a study session on one Tuesday and the following Tuesday, you could have your regular voting meeting.
Thank you.
And that was my intention. If we need to modify the language, I'm, I'm fine with that. That was my intention. My intention was to prevent a study session and then a special meeting being called. Thank you.
But Director Katsavas, may, so you, if something were to be reviewed at a study session, the following Tuesday, your intention was, we could theoretically vote on it. You're just, you did not want, like, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday? That, okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mayor.
Yes. Director Kemp.
So, and this is just non-CIP, any CIP item, right? So it's the non-CIP, correct?
Or, or a budgeted item. Budgeted or CIP, we've, we've talked about those in the study session. I think that's the original, it's, it's in a study session, we've talked about it. So that wouldn't be one that would come back to us. But if it's something that we have not talked about before, it's not on a CIP plan or not a budgeted item, it comes to the board for study session.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So we're, we're voting on the amendment. Director Settle, you're recognized.
So, so this doesn't include emergencies?
Correct. There's a provision for emergencies that allow for public health and safety. And then we've defined emergency, we've defined emergency in Section 1B. Emergency means a condition posing an immediate threat to public health, safety, or public or property requiring urgent action as determined by the city administrator and approved by two-thirds vote of the Board of Directors. So, you know, if we've got a water main that breaks, certainly that can be addressed. That doesn't need to come before the board before that's fixed.
Does it have to be approved by two-thirds of them?
Well, we can remove that.
Okay.
What is it?
Well, it, and approved by two-thirds voted in the Board of Directors if it's an emergency. If it's, if it's an emergency and it still has to be approved by two-thirds of the board, we'd have to reconvene, we'd have to convene in a, in a study session. Or we'd have to convene to meet, to approve it in order to be able to move forward.
In an emergency, we should have, be nimble enough to fix that, that water break almost immediately.
So I'm, we'll propose, do we need to vote on the First Amendment? I can propose a Second Amendment to remove the two-thirds vote of the Board of Directors.
I think that would serve a lot of things for me.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read what we're getting ready to vote on?
The amendment.
The amendment. Right, right. The amendment for the 100,000.
This is a roll call vote for the First Amendment.
Right.
Okay. Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Katsavas.
Yes.
Christina Katsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Passes seven in favor zero opposed.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend Section 1, Subsection B and remove after, and approved by, and approved by the Board, two-thirds by the, by the Board of the Directors.
Second.
Okay. Okay, you ready? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Katsavas.
Christina Katsavas. Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Passes seven in favor zero opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much. This time we will go to the, okay. This time we will get, entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So we already have a motion. We just need a roll call vote for the emergency clause, or for the, I'm sorry, for the ordinance.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
Okay. Call the roll.
Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Katsavas.
Yes.
Christina Katsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Passes seven in favor zero opposed.
Very good. Now we can go to item number three.
Do we have an emergency clause? Motion to approve.
One more.
You want an emergency clause? Let's put an emergency clause on it.
Motion to approve an emergency clause.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Directors George Katsavas.
Yes.
Christina Katsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor zero opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. This time we'll go to item three.
Item three is an ordinance amending the city code regarding business license fees. As discussed at yesterday's budget session, staff proposes to increase the business license fee for businesses that do not have a physical brick-and-mortar presence in the city of Fort Smith to $500 per year and eliminate the provision that the first year's business license is free of charge. Deputy Administrator Maggie Rice will address this item further.
Okay.
Sure. In 2024, staff issued 328 business licenses to entities who listed their primary address as locations as outside the corporate limits of the city of Fort Smith. Of the 328, 261 paid a renewal fee of $100 and the remaining 67 were first-time registrants and received a business license without paying a fee. This generated $26,100 in revenue. The proposed ordinance increases the business license fee for both a first-time registrant and/or renewal without a physical brick or mortar presence in Fort Smith to $500. It also eliminates the first-year waiver. Based on 2024 activity, the proposed increase would generate an additional $130,900 in business license fee revenue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on this item?
Yes, we have Joe Elskin.
Hi. I was just wondering if there is another benefit beyond the little over $100,000 that you will get from this every year. Because I, I know you have a hard job in trying to get people to come in. I know I want people to, businesses to come into downtown. CBID wants them to come into downtown. And years ago, I overheard and conversed with a business person who said that Fort Smith is, is not business-friendly. Now, disclosure, I know nothing about running a business, so I don't understand. I, I would like to understand, excuse me, I'd like to understand what the benefit of this is because it seems to me that you're not going to get people to come in if they feel like they, they aren't being welcome and they have to pay $500. And, and small businesses can grow to big businesses. And it seems like the $100,000 would be a lot less if businesses aren't coming in. So I just need to know why this, this $100,000 plus matters enough to do that to, to businesses. It's hard to grow a city, be as route for you all, but anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Were there any other comments?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rule?
So move with suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think Deputy Minister Rice had some comments.
If you would like for me to respond to Ms. Elskin, I'd be happy to.
Would you please?
Sure, absolutely. So this is only for businesses that are outside, that do not have a physical brick or mortar Fort Smith. And they do, they come in and they physically are doing business in Fort Smith. Just to give you some numbers, a lot of them are out-of-state businesses. Approximately 131 are out-of-state and a lot of them are contractor-based. And they come in and they work on projects in Fort Smith. And when they get a building permit, we do an audit and we require them to also get a business license. This is also relative to when we have major hailstorms. We get a lot of out-of-state, out-of-city roofing contractors that come in. And it's very helpful when they are registered and we know that they're here. Because we can keep them accountable for not only permits, but if there are issues, if property owners sometimes unfortunately have issues with those contractors, we can ensure that we have the proper contact information for them. They're also receiving the benefits of our infrastructure. They're not paying property taxes. And so that's the, the thought process by the increased fee. No, if they have a physical brick-and-mortar presence, there's. No, if they have a physical brick and mortar presence, there's no change to those license fees. Yes, ma'am?
If I might add, I think it also trying to incentivize folks to build a brick and mortar presence within the city of Fort Smith if they intend to do business here. And those folks that are outside the state or outside of the city, they are competing with businesses that are building brick and mortar businesses here. So, I think the, the, the homegrown businesses deserve somewhat of an advantage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rice, for the in-depth explanation of this decision. This time we need a motion to, did we pass a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rule? And we did receive a second. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 3, Section 1362 and Section 1369 of the Fort Smith Municipal Code Regarding Business License Fees.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Kemp?
Yes.
George Kit Savis?
Yes.
Christina Kit Savis?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Passes seven in favor, zero opposed.
Item number four. Item four is an ordinance amending the city code regarding charges for solid waste services. This ordinance updates the language in the city code related to service charges and amends the landfill disposal gate rate and the commercial industrial service charges to rates that cover the cost for providing services and are more in line with market value. The language does not include annual adjustment, oh, I'm sorry, the language does include annual adjustment according to the U.S. Department of Labor's Consumer Price Index for garbage services be caps any such adjustment at no more than 5%. The ordinance does not change or amend the residential solid waste charges. This item was also addressed at yesterday's budget session and the $3.75 million in additional revenues that this is intended to generate will benefit both the solid waste fund and the general fund. Director of Solid Waste Services Dwayne McDonald will speak further to this item if there are any questions. And either, either Dwayne or myself will, will attempt to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne. You're recognized for any comments.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Directors, Administration. Staff is proposing to revise the determination of charges portion of the municipal code to update the service rates. The necessity for doing so was made evident in a report and study session that was presented to the board last September by Sloan Vasquez McCaffey. The report demonstrated that the rates which were last changed in 2020 are currently inadequate to cover the increasing cost of providing solid waste services, which have been driven by a greater-than-25% increase in the Consumer Price Index over that time, as well as increased level of service and increased non-departmental requirements. The SVM report showed that the city's average cost of providing landfill services is currently $47.10 per ton of trash disposed. And for residential service, it's $23.49 per month for our current level of service with weekly pickup of trash recycling and yard waste. It's also about $6.55 a cubic yard for commercial service. The SVM report also suggested a number of ancillary services that could be added to boost revenue or reduce costs for the department, which we've included in our recommendation. The solid waste services department funds all of our operations from these service revenues, as well as sinking fund savings for future, future capital equipment needs, landfill construction enclosure needs, and also related city policy administration, management, and neighborhood services functions. For residential service, I'll cut right to the chase here. Staff is proposing no change to the 1589 monthly residential service rate that has been in effect since January of 2022. That service currently is costing, as I already mentioned, a little over $23. Just for trash, it's $17.42 at this point. And the 1589 residential rate is the lowest among 17 cities surveyed in Arkansas and eastern Oklahoma. So, we're proposing no change to that. We also propose no change to existing residential bulky pickup, dial-a-truck service, brush collection service, or the replacement of worn-out or, or damaged carts. We would like to add a dial-a-truck option for a three-yard debris bag service in which the bag would be provided and picked up at the customer's convenience for a flat charge, similar to what some private solid waste companies offer in other markets. Return service for a missed pickup due to error on the part of the collection crew will continue to be made at no charge, of course. We do propose adding an optional $15 return service charge for, to, to come back in empty carts that were not set out or were not available at the scheduled time. Without such an option, return service is sometimes assumed to be free, but it's actually very costly for the department to send a truck and crew to pick up one location at a time. So, we'd like to have a mechanism for saying yes to that request and also covering part of the cost of doing so. For Lanceville service, staff is proposing to increase the landfill gate rate for trash disposal from the current $36 per ton, which has been in effect since 2020, to $50 per ton, plus applicable, applicable fees and sales tax with a half-ton minimum. We propose increasing the asbestos disposal to $120 per ton from 100. Waste requiring any sort of special handling to $60 per ton. Pull-off service to $50. And non-residential compost purchase to $40 per cubic yard to help cover our costs for providing those, those services. The residential rate for purchasing compost at the landfill would remain unchanged at $10 per cubic yard plus sales tax. The current retail pricing for similar compost is about $70 per cubic yard, so that's going to remain a good deal. We're proposing no change to the Fort Smith resident discount at the landfill for disposal of up to two cubic yards of waste, which is about one-level pickup truck load, for $10 plus applicable fees and sales tax. We would like to change the allowance for that. Currently, it's only allowed on the first Saturday of each month. And we would like to open that up so that that discount applies every day of the month. That will be more convenient for residents and it will actually help out landfill traffic flow as well by spreading out the traffic. And I don't anticipate any financial impact in doing that. For commercial and industrial service, staff proposes container size and pickup service rate increases commensurate with the SVM recommendations, which will continue to allow the department to offer competitive commercial and industrial services to the city and surrounding communities while improving our revenue a modest amount. We also provide, propose adding ancillary services and associated charges for extra or return services, customer container modifications, compactor installations, and container cleaning, which have previously not been offered or sometimes performed at no charge. And again, having that in the ordinance gives us a way to say yes to our customers and also make sure that we're covering the cost for doing so. And the last item is a CPI adjustment for landfill disposal and commercial industrial service rates. We're proposing an annual adjustment equal to the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer, Consumer Price Index for trash collection services for the most recent 12 months, to ensure that the rates continue to sustainably generate enough revenue to cover the department's obligations. The adjustments would be calculated in November. They would take effect on January 1st of each year, starting in 2027, and would be published on the city website one month in advance, so that customers can see what they're going to be and they can plan for it. The language provides that the adjustment would either be the CPI adjustment or 5%, whichever is less. So, we're capping that increase at 5%. A similar annual CPI adjustment is included in many private sector multi-year service contracts. And it allows periodic and frequent large increases, as we're discussing this evening, with smaller predictable annual increases that our customers can budget for. The CPI adjustment would not apply to residential service rates. It would just be the landfill rate and, and the commercial service. Altogether, this would increase the revenue coming into the solid waste services department by approximately $3.75 million. It's understood that a portion of that revenue is going to be used to supplement appropriate general fund operations. A redline version of the ordinance language is also attached in your package for your review and comparison. And I look forward to addressing any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, we have two, the first being Rocky Walker.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City, Acting City Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, you guys know me. And I'm here as, as a citizen, but I'm here as a home builder and I'm here representing Greater Fort Smith Association of Home Builders. We just found out about this. The tonnage going from $36 to $50 is a 40% increase. 40%. Now, I know you guys like to quote that we're bringing it in line with other communities. Unless you like to stay underneath other communities, then you quote, "Well, we're so much cheaper than other communities." Look, you're going up 20 to 25% on everything else here on commercial stuff. Now, I know you're not going up on the citizens, even though you're losing money on the citizens too. But I know why you're not going up on it, because you don't want a sewer deal. And I understand that. But what you're going to do is you're going to raise the price of a 2,000-square-foot house by $2,000. Okay? A dumpster, a 30-yard open-top dumpster is going to go from about a little less than $2,000 to about $2,750. And I use two and a half on average for a 2,000-square-foot house. So, you're going up $2,000. Every $1,000 you raise the price of a house, you knock eight people out of the ability to buy a house in Fort Smith, Arkansas. So, you can just knock 16 people out of buying a house in Fort Smith, Arkansas. I got news for you. The housing economy in Fort Smith, Arkansas sucks, okay? And it sucked for a year, all right? And we're doing our best to try to survive. We're doing our best to try to develop. We're doing our best to try to make it for the F-35 that's, we got four. If everything we're raising up is 20 to 25%, why can't we go up on the tonnage 20 to 25% instead of going up 40%? And I know I'm kind of batting at the wind, but I do appreciate you listening to me. And it's good to see y'all as always.
Okay, thanks, Rocky. Madam Clerk?
Yes, next we have Kim Fodge.
Sorry, I'm making it for lost time. I understand why the request for the rate increase, but it just seems like we're being nickled and dimed to death. I'm, I am a Secretary Treasurer for a nonprofit association, a homeowners' association. We have a commercial dumpster. This is going to impact us. We're already being impacted because of the high water and sewer rates. Now, we've got to deal with the high sanitation rates. It's increased. We're limited on the amount of money that we can generate each year due to our bylaws and covenants. And now, we're having to deal with another rate increase. And I'm just trying to understand, first of all, I don't understand some of the language in the rate increases and what it means. And if someone wants to talk to me later on and try to explain this and make it clear so I can understand it, I would appreciate it. But we have a two-cubic-yard dumpster, but it shows in this ordinance that you're being charged $25.85 for the first 180, or 160 gallons, and then so on, and so on. So, I just wish you guys would, I wish the board and I hope others would take it into consideration and just be mindful how these rates impacting small businesses. I can't imagine what restaurants and other small businesses are having to deal with, because they've got more garbage than we do. But thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, were there any other comments?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. This time we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rule.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance to amend Section 25, 278 of the Fort Smith Municipal Code Regarding Charges for Solid Waste Services.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Director Neil Martin?
So, Dwayne, real quick. So, we, we've had some discussions about this. And I'm, I'm more interested in, in the landfill rate, because I think when, maybe I talked to Jeff, I can't remember exactly. But we have companies like Waste Management and Cards that, that do waste disposal for cities outside of Fort Smith.
That's correct.
That's correct. So, they go around, they collect trash for Greenwood. Is that, is Greenwood a city that, that they do, that they collect trash?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, you got Greenwood, you got other entities. And they go and they take that to our landfill, and then they dump it at our landfill for a, for a cost that is cheaper for us to operate the landfill. Is that correct? The $36 a, a ton, according to the information here, we're charging them $36 a ton, whereas it costs us to open sales, close sales, manage the landfill, $47. Is that true?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, so, so, so Greenwood is incentivized to use our landfill and not pay the costs associated with what I pay. So, they're technically getting a better deal, okay? Is that, is that, is that a true statement?
I believe so. And that applies to eight surrounding counties in Arkansas and eastern Oklahoma.
Can you name those? I, I put you on the spot. Any, anybody?
Most of them.
Anybody know Crawford, Crawford County?
Crawford, Scott, LaFlore, all the way up to Washington.
They're all sending their trash here. They're all sending their trash here and dropping it in our landfills. Is that correct?
Many of those communities are. And we don't get all of it. We, we, we control the trash inside the city and all of it is supposed to be going to the landfill, to our landfill. Outside of the city, that trash, they have options about that waste going to other disposal facilities. But in most cases, we're the closest. And, and we have been, you know, by a pretty wide margin, the cheapest.
Okay. Because we're, we're basically giving, giving service away in, in the way, the way this works. So, do we, you know, when we talked about water and sewer rates, we, we did see an instance where, you know, we raised water rates and usage drops for a couple of years. Do you anticipate the same scenario here where if, if we were to raise this to $50 for a ton, that somebody would go somewhere else? Or do you, does this put us out of line with these other options that they have?
The, the regional average is $53 and some change.
Okay.
So, we're still slightly below that.
Okay.
And that possibility was taken into account, really, in, in choosing the $50 tipping fee.
Okay.
I think we probably will lose some business. It's kind of hard to predict how much. But, but the, the intent here was to remain competitive with the other regional, regional options and not lose the majority of our business that's, that's really paying the cost of keeping the landfill open.
Right. I, I do, I do not, I, similar with the business license discussion just a little bit ago, I think we've got some scenarios where we're incentivizing people not to be here, not to live in the city of Fort Smith. And, you know, we talked about with the water rates yesterday when we were talking about, you know, 42% of our water is sold to a company or cities outside of Fort Smith. If they weren't, if they didn't exist, if we weren't selling them water, we wouldn't have any water issues at all. So, you know, I don't think we need to be incentivizing other communities outside of here. The, the question I have is related to what Ms. Fodge said. In, in the container, I had, I had something different in my mind related to the container that we're planning on, on raising the rate. What does that container actually look like? I was thinking it was one of the big, long ones with no top on it. But can you kind of describe what that container is so I make sure I'm, I'm squared away?
Well, when we're talking about commercial, we're talking about what most people refer to as dumpsters. And it's going to be a smaller box with a plastic lid on top with the casters underneath. The other that you referred to is a roll-off box, which is typically going to be stationary. It's usually used for construction and, and demolition and, you know, larger, it's the- It's usually used for construction and demolition and, you know, larger, it's the, the much larger box, and that's, that's picked up by a special truck.
Are we, are we raising?
Both.
We're raising both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, all right. I just wanted to square away some of that stuff and let my fellow board members talk after.
Director George Kit Savis, and then Director Rigo.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just had a quick question. Thank you, Director Kit Savis. In this discussion about losing customers, or theoretically losing customers, where would they even go? Is there one in, there's one in Tonty Town, there's one in, a small one in Salasaw?
There is.
Is that, okay, I gotta imagine that when you look at some of these adjustments that we're contemplating, if you're running a external commercial business, you know, the, the transit costs alone on a regular basis, getting to and from either of those locations to locations that are much closer to Fort Smith, your delta would be eaten up by those transportation costs to go well out of your way to either of those locations, I would imagine.
It, it very well could be, and, and there's a significant cost to that. Salasaw is much closer, and depending on where the waste is being collected, it might, you know, I've looked at this, it may only be another 15 or 20 minutes versus coming to the Fort Smith landfill. And if that waste is being picked up outside of the city limits, it very well could go to Salasaw. It's a much smaller landfill. The level of customer service there is somewhat different than ours. It's not gonna be quite as easy in and out, but for smaller customers, that could be an option. Tonty Town is quite a bit further away, and the gate rate there is over $73. So, um, that might, that might be, at some point, if, if, if our price were high enough, that might start to look attractive to larger customers who could get a special deal there. But for the smaller customers, Tonty Town's not really competitive with us.
Thanks.
And then I think any landfills to the east are, are further distant than those.
Director George Kit Savis, and then Director?
Rocky?
Yeah.
I need to talk to you.
Yes, sir.
Come on up. You, when were you notified of this?
Yesterday.
How were you notified?
Another home builder member.
Just kinda just hit y'all real quick, didn't it?
Yeah, I did.
Do, do you think there's any room for compromise between you and sanitation if you're able to sit down and discuss this?
Well, I mean, you know, like I said, I ask, you know, y'all are gonna, if you went up 20 to 25%, that's still a huge jump, but it's not 40%.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I'm obviously voicing my opinion here, and like I said, which I appreciate you allowing me to do, you know, my concern is for affordability of housing.
Yeah.
You know, and houses are already unaffordable, and we're trying to work on that, but we're just, seem to be every time we turn around, making it worse. I've already got a $17-a-yard concrete increase for January 1st. I've got appliance up for January 1st. I've got faucets going up 10% January 1st. And so, you know, and, you know, and I am hooked to the marketplace. I'm live without a net, okay? I am hooked to the market. I have, I have competition, you know, I could charge whatever, but I'm not gonna get any business. I have to be competitive with my charging in order to stay in business. And so, you know, we eat what we can eat, you know? We don't pass along, you know? We eat everything we can eat to try to help the customer. We do, honestly. But then it becomes a point where you can't eat anymore, and, you know, eating trash is no fun anyway.
So, on a, on a job site, you have one dumpster, a 30-yard dumpster?
I have a 30-yard dumpster that I keep dedicated to a neighborhood, and I'll use multiple jobs, and it gets emptied all the time. And like I said, about a 2,000-square-foot house to complete it from start to finish is about two and a half of those dumpsters. Now, we do a very good job, in my opinion, and we, and we try to do it better every day, of maximizing so we do not put as any more in the dumpster than we have to. I don't put brick, I don't put concrete in the dumpster, it goes under the driveway. You know, lumber, we, we use everything down to little bare nubbins as much as we possibly can, so, but you still end up with quite a bit of waste, unfortunately. So, it's a cost, and like I said, people are struggling to afford new housing, you know, we're trying to make it more attractive. So, when I heard this, I was compelled by my members to come here and at least voice our concern over it, and that's, that's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm doing. You know, yes, if we could get a break on the, on the increase, that would be awesome. But, you know, but I don't look for it, but I, but I would appreciate it, we would appreciate that. And I just met Mr. McDonald, he seemed like a very competent, capable individual, and I, I appreciate him very much, and I appreciate him and Maggie's candor with me earlier before the meeting. You know, yes, we will look for other alternatives to deal with our trash, but I don't know of any legally, you know?
Yeah. Burn permits, burn permits, right?
I mean, there's always LaFlore County. I didn't say that. So...
Well, Mr. McDonald, would you be willing to sit down and talk to these builders and see?
I mean, we appreciate, I mean, we appreciate it.
Well, I've been good at stating on this just for that very reason. I think there should have been more notice for you all to mount some kind of defense.
Well, we appreciate that, sir.
Okay. Director Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I feel, and I can appreciate Mr. Walker's comments, and then I did have a question for you, Dwayne. I can appreciate the comments, and, and I appreciate, you know, your politeness and voicing your opinion and speaking for the people of the Home Builder Association. The hard part is, from the budget hearing, we had really hard discussions about making a balanced budget to the, to the abilities of even having to consider now adjusting, you know, first responders and other positions in other departments that are going to be things that, to, we talk about balancing a budget. So, that's the tension that we're feeling is that we have to generate some revenue to it. Dwayne, my question would be, since these are, if there's a potential that there are businesses, right, that we already know are registered with us, if they're a brick-and-mortar home builder, and registered with the city of Fort Smith, and since it is something tied to the housing market, is there any sort of idea that we can, I mean, we don't, we would know who those are, is there any ability to offer them an adjustment to not go straight to the 40% increase?
I think that's an, an option if the board desires it. Within the ordinance itself, it says that we have some ability to negotiate rates, that the rates that are listed in the ordinance are maximums. We can't go above those. But we do have some ability to nego, you know, for competitive purposes, to negotiate and maintain that business.
I mean, I'm sensitive to the housing market idea. I was just thinking 25% might be easier for them to swallow than 40%. But also, I am sensitive to balancing a budget, figuring out what we can do here to do right by us, and I mean, to Director Rigo's point, where would these people go if it were not us? And I think, you know, we're finding a way to be equitable in this and doing what we can. You know, I just, I have a question about being sensitive to the idea of a housing market as well, though, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dingman, you're recognized.
Yeah, just, just to that point, I think that, you know, as, as Director Martin mentioned earlier, you know, we have, have a determination of what our cost of providing services at the landfill is, and that's $47 a ton. And as Mr. McDonald pointed out earlier, that the revenues that we are, are realizing from the landfill operation essentially is, is subsidizing a loss on the residential side. So, I mean, our, in order to keep the residential rate static as to where it is, you know, that, that landfill rate is, is covering a loss in that operation as well. And so, I think that those are important items to, to recognize, and I, and I realize, I certainly have heard Mr. Walker's comments, and, you know, I've expected them to some degree, because it, because it is a very real cost, I understand that. But also, living in Fort Smith, once you buy that house, has to remain sustainable as well, and, you know, the, the landfill operations and the residential service needs to sustain as well.
Okay, thank you. Director Kemp?
Just to, Rocky, do you mind coming up and answering a question, quick?
Yes, sir.
At any given time, how many homes are being built in Fort Smith?
Well, it varies because it just depends on the way the market is. You know, right now, it's probably, well, I know for a fact, we're in the worst market we have been since '08.
And I don't get to vote on that, but...
Yeah, and, and, but, but it's, so, so we're down right now on inventory because, you know, at least I have planned down, I only have one house in inventory for sale right now, but I have, last summer, '24, during the election, we could see that this was coming, so I kind of wowed back on production, pulled the throttle back on it, chased more customs than I did specs. And so, I would love to start some more. I'm probably gonna go ahead and start another spec, I've got several customs to start. But probably in Fort Smith right now, um, there's probably 80, 60 to 80 houses on the market new. There should be more than that, but, um, they're, they've been on the market for a while, you know, most of them have been, because the market is tepid, you know? And it's, it's lots of factors. There's the uncertainty, there's the rates, you know? We have been building and developing in anticipation of the F-35 program, and so, we're waiting, you know, for that to come into more fruition. So, hopefully, that'll pick up the slack, you know? And I know there's lots of good things going on in Fort Smith, and we're all pulling for Fort Smith, that's why we're all here. And like I said, I'm not here to complain, it's just, we gotta stand up for every dollar that we can because they're just hard to earn. A dollar is hard to earn, and you guys know that, and I know you're trying to budget here, but a dollar, a dollar is hard to come by. And we gotta risk, and we gotta work really hard to get that dollar, so we try to hang on to them as much as we can, not to be greedy, but to be responsible to our families, to our community, you know? I can't give to those that need it if I don't get. And so, uh, but, but, so the market is slow right now. It's starting to pick up. I know the first two weeks in, uh, November nationally, we're the best, no, first two weeks in November we've had in three years, national sales-wise, so we always, I'm an optimist, I always look for good news in anything, and so, we've kind of glommed onto that. There's some, you know, some interesting opportunities or, or products coming potentially in the market to help people buy houses, for better or worse, but they're interesting, you know, so...
Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
Yep, you're welcome.
Other, Director Neil Martin?
Dwayne, quick question for you. The scenario I talked about with these outside entities coming in and dumping their trash here, what, what is the, versus Mr. Walker and, and what he does? What's the, is there any way that you can give me a percentage of where the, that, that cost would be bore most? Does that make, so, so like, like, is, are Cards gonna feel it at 80% and then folks like Rocky at about 20%? Or can you, can you, can you give me that figure?
I don't know if I have a great answer for that question, um, but Cards currently is our largest customer. So, most, more of the total revenue is going to come from them than any other entity that's coming in.
Do you know how much, what percentage of revenue they are at the landfill? 60%? 30%?
Uh, no, sir, it's not quite that much, but I'm, I'm thinking it's, at this point, it's probably about a third. I haven't looked at that in a little while.
Okay.
You know, Waste Management and MSG Roll Off are second and third.
Okay. And then the, one, one thing that I've got, it's kind of unrelated to this, but what are the hours that are, well, our, our landfill, did it used to be open till 4:00 on Saturdays?
It did.
And did that get cut back?
Yes, sir. Last spring, we cut it back to 11:30 for the public and, and noon for the large haulers.
Okay, I, I got a picture that there was quite a bit of, there's a huge line there on Saturday. Is that normal on Saturday?
Not lately, and I'm not sure exactly why that was.
You, you, you experienced what I, what I got a picture of?
I saw it. Usually, you know, sometimes it depends on the weather. If we've had rain recently and then we have some sunny weather, sometimes we see more people coming into the landfill. I'm not, this was not first Saturday, so I don't have a good explanation of why it was busier than usual, but it was busier than we've seen in several months.
And so, for, for, getting back to specifically the ordinance, for this, for, for the change that we're making here, you're gonna allow residential every day? Like, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna allow Fort Smith residents to drop off at the landfill every day, whereas now, they can just do it on Saturday?
$10.
For $10, right?
That's right, on the first Saturday. And part of the reason for that is that we noticed that we are busier on that first Saturday of the month generally, and, you know, that's kind of an issue for the landfill as well as the residents, and we'd, I, I don't think the amount of business coming in will change. We might as well open that up and make it more convenient for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Director Rigo, and then Director Settle.
Uh, I don't have a question anymore, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Director Settle.
I just want to clear up the $10. It's $10, any, any citizen of Fort Smith can come with a truck, pickup truck, dump off landfill for $10 any day going forward after this passes, is that correct?
Yes, sir, up to, up to about two cubic yards, which is a pickup load.
Does this take, sorry, does this take effect in January, January 1st, if it passes?
That's, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Director George Kit Savis?
Rubenstein.
Christina Kit Savis?
You know, I don't feel like I have sufficient information to make a determination at this time, so I'm gonna abstain.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin? Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Passes, four in favor, zero opposed, oh, I'm sorry, five in favor, zero opposed, and two abstentions.
Thank you. At this time, item number five is a request from administration that item number five be withdrawn. Mr. Dingman, would you like to make any comments?
No, just that, that we need item five to be withdrawn from, for consideration from this evening's agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to item number six.
Item six is a resolution authorizing acquisition of sewer utility easement for a consent decree project. City Engineer Jimmy Johnson will speak or answer any questions from the board.
The easement is necessitated for, for the consent decree compliance to be able to reconstruct a sewer line. The city personnel initially did a property value report, and that report come back for a value of $6,318. The property owner made a counteroffer of $9,000, and he supported his offer with a, an appraisal, and the appraisal cost him $2,500, so his counteroffer was $11,500. Consider, consideration was given to the project scheduling and costs of imminent domain proceedings, which would likely exceed the counteroffer. Staff therefore makes a recommendation to approve the counteroffer of $11,500. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any further questions for him? Okay, are there any citizens' comments?
None indicated.
Motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Director Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rigo?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kit Savis?
Yes.
Christina Kit Savis?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will go to the consent agenda.
There, there are seven items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Staff requests removal of item 7A for separate consideration. The remaining items 7B through 7G are as follows. A resolution adopting amendment to the agreement with Baker Tilly for water sewer risk assessment services. A resolution declaring project complete and authorizing final payment to Dale Crampton Company for roof repair on city buildings damaged by hail. A resolution authorizing acceptance of utility easements for the Highway 45 relocation project. A resolution authorizing change order number four regarding the Highway 255 18-inch waterline relocation project. A resolution accepting the project as complete and authorizing final pay on the Highway 255 18-inch waterline relocation project. And a resolution authorizing a third-party solid waste services contract.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on any of these items?
Yes, we have Kim Fodge for item 7B.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will entertain a motion to adopt all items on the consent agenda, with the exception of item A, which we'll, we'll have a separate vote.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? If seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Martin?
Yes.
Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Approved, seven in favor, zero opposed.
This time, Madam Clerk, please, on item A. Mr. Dingman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven A is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a real estate contract for the sale of surplus city property at seventy-seven hundred Texas Road, and this item is revised from what is in your agenda packet. The city received competing offers to purchase this property, and an offer subsequent to the one presented in the packet was more advantageous to the city. Deputy Administrator Rice will speak further to this item.
Yes, thank you. The city did receive an offer over asking of fifty thousand one hundred dollars. The closing date, there are no contingencies with that offer, the closing date is listed as December first. There was another offer that the city received that was four hundred dollars more than the offer that is being presented to you. However, that offer had contingencies on it and did not have a closing, closing date until February, and staff reviewed the offers and discussed them with Colby, and we decided that the four hundred dollar offer, the, the lower offer was actually the better offer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments on that item? Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Yes.
So, this is the property right across from Cavill School District, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, when we brought this to the board, I asked a very important question, do we contact the school and see if the school would like to have this property? Did we do that?
No, I did not make contact.
Then I'm a no, because to me, the school system needs parking over there. And so, if we haven't contacted the school to see if they at least wanted it, I'll be a no. If the board wants to let somebody develop on it, that's fine, but to me, I.
Contact them to buy it.
Contact to see if they, George, it's, it's our school system, there's parking, there's kids, there's, there's traffic needs, go buy the schools under traffic.
Even if they might be closing that school?
I don't know if that's happening or not.
Yeah, I don't know either. I know it's on the list.
But I, I thought we contacted them, but that's, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven A.
So, second. Okay. Madam Clerk? Yes, yes, Director Kemp.
This is a property on our list that we talked about selling, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we getting the word out to the community, and how are we doing that?
These properties are listed with Gain and Cooper Commercial Properties on the MLS. There is a large sign on this property for sale. We've received multiple offers on this property.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no further questions, please call the roll.
Director Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
I'm a no.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes six in favor, one opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to, go to the official forum. If you have not, have not picked up your copy of the Fort Smith Public Schools Annual Report, please do so. Director Neil Martin.
We missed the toy toss tonight.
We did.
At Ufus.
I wanted to go to.
Yeah, I did too. I did too. Nothing for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Director Settle?
No, sir.
Okay, Director Kitzavas?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Director George Kitzavas?
Um, nothing.
Director Kemp?
I'd like to thank my lovely wife, Sarah Kemp, as we will be celebrating twenty years of marriage tomorrow, and I, thank you. I'd like to thank her for putting up for me, putting up with me and tolerating all my shenanigans.
Yeah, God love her, God love her.
She's not, she's at home. Yeah, we're going on a trip tomorrow, so she was packing us up.
She is a, she's a.
She's a champ.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Strong woman, strong woman.
That's right, thank you, Mayor.
Director Good?
Yeah, I want to thank staff for, all the staff that were there at yesterday's budget hearing meetings. It was not quite as long as day as I expected, but they were there, ready, prepared, to answer questions, give information, so I just wanted to thank our staff for being there.
Thank you, Director Good, for making that point again. Great work on behalf of our staff, great staff. Director Rigo?
Nothing, sir.
Mayor, I forgot something. I just want, what, I'm getting a lot of complaints again on the mosquito spraying, do y'all have any thoughts? Do y'all want to look at it again?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I know y'all are.
Yep, second.
Third.
So, how do we do this, then?
Sounds like you made a motion, George.
Yeah, you made a motion.
I made a motion, okay. Second?
Well, sure, I'd like, I'd love to discuss that again at a study session.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do it, I thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
Just a reminder that there's, there will be no study session next week on, on November twenty-fifth, and the city's offices will be closed on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for the Thanksgiving holiday next week.
Maybe I might, we need a study session next Wednesday night.
No, we're going to adjourn. If there's no further business coming before the board, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, 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 we got an executive session.
There's an executive session to appoint.
Ah, we do have an executive session. Man, I wrapped up my book. Let's go and, at this time, the board will go into executive session and make appointments to.
Audit Advisory Committee.
The Audit Advisory Committee, and, and the Building, Building Board of Adjustments, okay?
Is this one each? Okay, well.